Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the informational meeting here Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. I'd like to note that Councilor Chair Sale is absent today. We're going to start with committee reports. On the first item, we'll hear a report from Councilmember Starr on the Multicultural Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick update with our monthly board meeting is a lot of the focus is on getting a new executive director hired. So, we spent a lot of time talking about the process, how to get to recruit, and actively find the right candidates who will best serve the organization and the community. So, a majority of the meeting was spent that way, as well as just updating on programming and budget type of things, and how to afford a new executive director at the same time, so.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. We'll move on to council remarks. Are there any council remarks? Counselor Brecky.
I'll just give a brief update. I attended the ESF council meeting, and I'm happy to report that while they expected things to take a downturn in September, because that's kind of everybody's back to school, we still remained at a 74% average occupancy rate for hotel rooms in the city, and everything was continuing to just go up a little bit, which was better than expected. Still not back, you know, to where we want it to be, but getting closer and closer. And so, overall, health and picture is looking good in that entertainment industry. Particularly, the one that was lagging behind was the conventions area, and that one is starting to see some bookings now, and seeing some businesses wanting to come back and do live conventions. So, just thought I'd update you all on that. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Counselor Kylie.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd just like to state that yesterday was the chamber's kickoff for the Sioux Falls Skate Park Association's Chamber Appeals, which the Chamber and Council Vice Chair Jensen is part of that appeal process with the chambers in their attempt to raise $1.35 million for the skate park. As you know, this council authorized an additional $800,000 towards that project, which will take place at Drake Springs Swimming Pool area. And that has been, at least in our budget, that's budgeted in 2023. So, if you have that opportunity to make a commitment to this project, it is great. It is one that's going to greatly benefit the youth of our city. It's an activity that's affordable just to, hopefully, to just about everyone. Great organization, filled with volunteers, putting in countless hours of their own time with lessons, which I'd like to say, I learned yesterday, 80% of the participants in the skateboard lessons are females entering the activity. Now that it is an Olympic sport, it's great for us to have a skate park that's going to actually be better than what some of the skate parks in the region. I guess Watertown is another, was one, Vermillion was one. All of them had skate parks better than what we currently have. So, it just demonstrates the need for us to have one in our community of nearly $200,000. So, if you get the opportunity to support this worthy cause, I would very much appreciate it, as well as Counselor Jensen and this council. Thank you.
Thank you for those remarks. Any others? Okay, I will just make one special mention. The municipal day that is in Pierre is on February 2nd. We're going to be traveling there likely on the February 1st. So, with that, we'll have the council meeting on January 31st, okay? So, mark your calendars for that. We're going to jump into the fourth item here, presentations. Our first presentation is Expanding ESL Learning Opportunities by Tim Jurgens, State Refugee Coordinator and Director, Center for New Americans. Rebecca had a scheduling conflict today, so she cannot attend. So, thank you in joining us today, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, counsel. I believe we were in front of the council roughly two years ago to visit a little bit about the background of ESL services and what our programming at LSS of South Dakota provides. So, I just want to go back and give you some context. But, so the LSS Center for New Americans has been providing English language training for newcomers for more than 45 years. CNA specializes in instruction to adults with the lowest levels of literacy and English language skills. To give you perspective, the folks that we work with on a daily basis generally have an English level or literacy level of kindergarten to second grade, with their highest being fourth or fifth grade. As we all know, the diversity in Sioux Falls, in this particular area, is growing significantly. Based on the U.S. Census, it indicates that more than 3,300 Sioux Falls adults, between the ages of 18 to 64, either do not speak English at all, or do not speak English well. The CNA Adult Education and Literacy Program is designed to prepare these adult language learners for employment that leads to economic self-sufficiency. English language classes provide contextualized instruction and work readiness and workforce training for all levels of learners. Instruction at all levels aligns with state standards, college and career readiness standards for all adult education. CNA utilizes a number of effective instructional methods that are based on strong foundations of research. A learner participating in all class offerings may access up to 22 hours of instruction per week, depending on their work schedule and/or learning goals. These classes are offered year-round, 46 weeks a year. Morning, afternoon, and evening classes, class schedules allow adult learners to attend classes that accommodate their work schedule. To give you examples of success rates for our particular courses, after annual participation with regular attendance, our records basically state that at least 42% of those attendees increase their grade level by one grade. So, for instance, if they're at a kindergarten, first grade level, it would increase to two, or three, or four, depending on where they entered. How we know that data is we assess each individual at intake based on the BEST test, which is used as well by the Sioux Falls School District, and that's where those goals are set. Where do we identify currently with our gaps in services? For LSS specifically, reduced federal funding based on the low arrivals for the last four years has led to a 30% reduction in the number of ESL classes that we can offer for students. And that's based off the presidential administration determining each year how many arrivals can come into the area. Obviously, transportation and time barriers can be difficult for individuals who are working full-time jobs, and with fewer classes that are scheduled, it's offering less flexibility to community members. Some refugees and immigrants do not have adequate childcare, and I think the childcare issue was obviously impacting many families throughout the area, but specifically in Sioux Falls, so that they can attend classes. Strategies that we have employed or taken and are approaching moving forward are providing, really focusing on providing ESL classes with employers. This is something that we started to do prior to the pandemic, and it's just been slowed due to COVID guidelines and CDC recommendations. But that's one piece that we feel is very important, is worksite ESL classes. Expanding the availability of class times at the Center for New Americans to allow students to access classes out of their work hours. Again, that just basically connects or segues with what I mentioned above. Expanding the availability of hybrid classes or Zoom classes to reduce travel and/or childcare barriers while CDC and COVID-19 mitigation guidelines continue. And as for new arrivals and immigrants are expected to increase, we anticipate adding more step classes. Step classes are just skills that employ people. They're specific classes that generally connect with local employers. We adopt their terminology and create workplace language for individuals that are applying for jobs. Also, we're looking at trying to increase the number of classes for those trying to get a driver's license with DMV. As you know, MCC had offered that at one time. I believe currently that's still on hold. So, that's something that's significantly impacting a number of the immigrants and/or refugees in our community. Success rates for those classes? Now, I think these are outstanding when you compare them to national resettlement sites such as ourself. The success rate in those entering employment that have entered those classes, you're looking at 70 to 80% of those individuals are successfully employed after completing that step class. Retention rates are at 95%, while measuring them at 90 days. Access to benefits is 97% or above for those individuals successfully completing those step classes and completing that program. With that, I'm open to questions.
Counselor Brecky.
Can you just explain a little bit about, you know, you and I have had conversations about this, and in fact, I'm the one that asked you to be here, a little bit about where the federal funding falls short? I mean, and that's, you know, my understanding, you know, their program is to bring people here, you know, try to work on that workplace English to get themselves employed as sustainable, but then it just kind of drops off and stops. And for us as the community, in the past, we've never really picked up and taken that anywhere, and that's kind of what I'm suggesting that the city become interested in doing. But can you talk to me a little bit about the federal program that you're involved in, and what they actually fund and when they stop?
Sure. So, the clients specifically that I'm referring to are both immigrants and refugees. However, Counselor Brecky's question refers to the Office of Refugee Resettlement. They provide us funding based on the numbers that we resettle. And that's determined, again, by the Department of State and the President of the United States. So, as you look back at arrivals over the last four years, arrivals have dropped off by more than 75% compared to where they were historically. To give you an example, if you go back to 2015, I believe our statewide resettlement number was somewhere in that 490 to 500 number. Now, that's across the state. If you look at arrivals today, since October of 2020, we right now are at 50 individuals. So, when you look at that funding provision based on the numbers that we resettle, that's where the shortfall would come into that. So, it's at five-year eligibility is where we're looking at.
And then, just, can you just give us some ideas? If we were to fund you at, say, the tune of $100,000 per year, what kind of additional programming, you know, could you, you know, some ideas of how you would program that money, and, you know, who would benefit from it?
Well, it definitely would benefit the community of Sioux Falls, whether they're be immigrant or end or refugee. We would definitely be able to add classes. As I mentioned before, 90% of the individuals that we serve, regardless of their status, is that of an English or a literacy level between kindergarten and second grade. Those are our highest participation rates. So, it would definitely benefit those that, you know, are seeking classes, whether it be during the day and/or evening, and even the step classes. It would allow you to, or allow us or another agency, for instance, to partner with employers to provide some of that onsite ESL, as well as some of the step class training that I referred to earlier in my presentation.
That's all the questions I have for now.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Jurgens, talk a little bit about the change then in policy with the switch in the national government of what we're doing. What are we looking for resettlements of immigrants and refugees over the next year, two years, three years? Because I saw some numbers, but I don't remember. They were considerably larger, let's put it that way.
Right. So, based on the Trump administration, numbers, as I mentioned, significantly decreased. This process starts each year typically around the March to May area timeframe, federal fiscal year. And essentially, we go through our Refugee Advisory Committee, which involves many of our stakeholders here in Sioux Falls. And we try to determine what is the adequate infrastructure that, is it available to support the numbers? We are anticipating right now in reality, which we're anticipating is an operational capacity of probably about 150 individuals for fiscal year '22, which began in October. Our abstract, if you were to look at that, it would propose 325 individuals. That's what the federal guideline would be. But in reality, the operational infrastructure nationally is not yet prepared for that. So, realistic number is 150. Numbers on paper would project 325.
So, again, we're talking about people who are here legally, that are looking for those, you know, that have spent an amount of time either in a refugee camp.
Correct.
Part of that. Talk about what a typical person has as a background before they get here as a refugee, or that they would be resettled here.
Most individuals that we're working with are from the Congo, from Africa, from Somalia. They come with agricultural experience. Those are what most individuals are arriving with. So, what we do is we initially focus immediately on workplace training and language to try to get them employed as early as three to five months following arrival. And in most cases, we are very successful with that, let alone, if you look at the unemployment rate in South Dakota, you know about everybody and every corner is seeking someone, you know, to work for them. We receive calls, probably in a week's time, we receive calls from 30 to 50 employers, not only in Sioux Falls, but outside the city that are seeking a workforce. So, it's a dire need at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for your presentation today. And, you know, if we do go farther in that conversation of putting additional funding in, you know, and I think you have this, but just keep at the forefront, we'll want measurable goals that we can quantify, and you have those, but just know that that's going to be a piece of it. And with any request or any, you know, any of our counselors work on this, that's what we're going to want to see, so we can measure that and keep those dollars accountable. So, thank you, sir, for that.
No problem. Thanks for having me.
Yep. We're going to move on now to our second presentation of the day. It's the Sioux Falls Parks Foundation. We've got the Director of Parks coming up. We've got a supporting crew as well with Andy Patterson from the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation, and then Jennifer Kirby with the Sioux Falls Park Foundation. So, kick us off, and we'd love to hear your presentation.
Sounds good. Good afternoon, councilors. Don Kearney with Parks and Rec. Well, we're really excited to be here today to share a really positive development regarding the formation of a Sioux Falls Park Foundation. Councilors will remember, in early 2020, we presented our comprehensive plan, and one of the recommendations of that comprehensive plan was to consider forming a park foundation to really help advance projects and initiatives within the department. So, following the council's adoption of that plan, we really started having conversations around who might be interested in getting behind this, and then what are the likelihood that we're going to have success if we did form a foundation? As you know, Jennifer Kirby's really been active and involved in a lot of projects across the community. Specifically, her efforts were instrumental in the advancement of the Levitt Shell, and she really happens to know a little bit about philanthropy. As many of you probably know, Jennifer has been a great champion of that in our community, and certainly evidenced by the Kirby's significant financial contribution to make our first downtown dog park a reality. So, Jennifer, over the last several months, and others in the community, have stepped forward to take on this initiative and really work hand-in-hand with the city and the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation to make the park foundation a reality. So, with that background, I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer to talk about their group's work on this project so far, and what we can expect to see as this project gets off the ground to support our Parks and Recreation System. And as you mentioned, Andy is here as well. He's been an active partner in this as well, and so we're excited to share this information with you today. Jennifer?
Thank you, Director. Thank you for coming, Jennifer.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. When Don first talked to me about possibly leading the effort in getting together a parks foundation, I was thrilled, because I personally have benefited from the parks so much. When my family moved here from Omaha in the late 70s, my mom always would say, "The parks here are so nice. The parks here are amazing." And we lived about two blocks from Spellerburg Park. Every day, I'd ride my bike to the pool, take swimming lessons, ride my bike back home, have lunch, ride back to the pool, swim all day, have dinner, and ride back from my last time at the pool. And this eventually led to me being in a city swim meet. Each pool could send some people to a city swim meet, which then led me to joining swim team. I swam on swim team for years and years. And if there's one thing I know, if you're a distance swimmer on a swim team, no amount of work is too much, because I am living testimony to that, because it is hard, hard work. But it taught me the power of parks, and, you know, we lived a couple blocks from a park. It was very affordable, very accessible, and I think that is one of the best things about Sioux Falls. We truly have an exceptional park system. So, we have a long history of private dollars supporting the parks. When you think about McKenon Park, the land was donated by Helen McKenon Sherman Park. I believe Sherman was Helen McKenon's attorney and had talked her into donating that land. And Sioux Falls would be such a different place without all of that private support. So, I'm thrilled to lead the effort to help continue that private support and even make it grow, hopefully, because we've had plenty of private investment recently, but it's just kind of happened. We haven't had a group that's been actively pursuing that sort of investment in our park system. So, now we do have a group that's, we've been meeting for several months. I'll tell you who's on the board. Scott Christensen, Chuck Gullickson, Alex Hagan, Jason Herbert, Don Kearney, of course, Kim Patrick, Rochelle Sweetman, Bill Townsend, and Steve Sanford. I think Steve joined us today, so thank you. So, we've been getting organized. We had a planning session, and we plan on visiting with individuals who may be interested in having the parks be noted in their estate plans, or perhaps they're interested in some sort of transformative project that they would like to do during their lifetimes. So, we're going to be really more kind of proactively seeking out people that might be interested in supporting the parks system. And they could get, as my husband and I have, get great joy out of that support and also help the community at the same time. So, I'm thrilled to have this opportunity. We'll just see what it leads to. We'll be working hard and taking one foot in front of the other and see what it leads to, and hopefully, we can, you know, continue this great history we have of public and private partnerships in Sioux Falls. So, does anyone have questions?
Well, thank you very much. If there's no questions, all right.
Okay.
Well, I just want to say thank you. You know, you're investing in the Sioux Falls for All, which is an initiative that we all stand for up here. We all voted for, you know, investments in parks and in our city, and you're walking testament to that. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
I've got some questions for Andy.
Okay.
If I could.
Counselor Brecky. Mr. Patterson, welcome to the podium.
I didn't think you were going to get off that easy, did you?
Well, yeah, like, this has been great.
No, explain to me how we set that up, because the council didn't have any involvement in it. And I know I was for it as long as, really, it was an arms-length relationship between the city, because I think as elected officials, we have to be very careful about how we do that. And I, again, I'm a proponent of, you know, being successful by attraction rather than promotion, because it still needs to be separate and not anything that we can get involved in so that it doesn't look just really unfair or biased in any way. So, tell me how it's set up and how it is as an entity.
So, it's organized, we're calling it as an affiliate of the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. So, it's not a separate legal entity, not a separate 501(c)(3). So, if someone is contributing to the Sioux Falls Parks Foundation, it's ultimately a contribution to the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. So, we have an MOU between the Community Foundation and the Parks Advisory Board, the individuals that Jennifer cited that outlines that relationship. And what it really does is allows those volunteers to proactively reach out and introduce ideas. The Community Foundation, you know, we have endowments for 150 nonprofits. We help donors wherever they want to go. From time to time, we matchmake, you know, and we, some of the examples were projects that came through the foundation. But really, it's us just kind of listening and connecting someone to Don when they bring it up. We really need people to proactively go out and do it, and to be private citizens, not public officials. So, we think that we kind of accelerated the timeframe a bit by working off of the infrastructure of the Community Foundation. It didn't require a separate legal entity, a separate organization, governing board, but we think it captures all those same features, but in a more efficient structure.
So, did you look at other cities, and do other cities do it this way?
Yeah. There has been research. I know Don's team has looked at some of those things as well. I think the most common is that it's a separate 501(c)(3). I think honestly, when you look at some of those cities, they don't raise a lot of money. And I think one of the things that's helpful is the business of managing a nonprofit doesn't need to overwhelm the volunteers. They can focus on the fundraising. And so, I think that was the reason. But, you know, all the contributions are going to be governed by the things that donors are giving to. And so, obviously, the foundation will, you know, be obliged to follow that donor designation when they're making contributions.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
If I could just have the floor a minute, I just want to, I guess, say to my fellow council members, I really love what they did here. That is a very cool way to do this, again, that separates it from the elected official category, so we don't get into one of those situations where it even appears like, okay, if some of the bigger donors in town give to the park foundation, and then all of the sudden, we have to pass their TIF, right? You want those relationships to be separate. And when I said attraction versus promotion, this allows the Community Foundation to promote it. And it allows, you know, there to be full-fledged promotion. And to your point about others maybe haven't been that successful, that's maybe why, because they can't do it. By leaving it in the foundation, though, and the city taking a hands-off approach, then, you know, they can actively work it, and I think it's got a great potential. And of course, you know, we are, the foundation has such a fabulous reputation and history in this community that it couldn't be a better place. So, I just, you know, I had those questions, because I was wondering, you know, how that happened. And I know I expressed it to Andy early on when there was discussion about that, that that was really important to me, that, you know, it'd be something that was separated out of the political realm so that it could just really be kind of autonomous and just truly kind of in a world of its own. So, I really like that.
Director.
Yeah, thank you for the questions, Counselor. You know, the initial approach on this was, as we looked at other cities and what they've done, they had formed that separate nonprofit where they would be a separate entity. And knowing the strong Community Foundation we had with Andy, we talked to Andy about it. You know, Jennifer said, "Why duplicate, you know, having to do tax returns and staff and all that other stuff?" When we've had a very successful relationship with Andy, I think the key difference here is that we just now have a group of people advocating and seeking out those partnerships. But the reality is, is that if there's a gifting agreement over $100,000, that comes back to the City Council for approval. If it involves real estate, it'll come back to the City Council for your approval. And then, obviously, if there are any naming rights, like we did with Jacobson Plaza or Kirby Dog Park, those will all come back through the City Council, through those other processes. And so, we really feel it's kind of more of the same, but it's really more about putting more horsepower behind it with all these volunteers that we've got to really generate more interest and try to match up donor interests with projects that we have and really continue on with that public-private partnership, because it's really just kind of happened, just out of, you know, the nature of the beast, so to speak, in working with Andy. But now to have this group really being out there and advocating for it and trying to find those partnerships is really what this does for us, so.
Great, thanks. Thanks for coming.
Yeah. I just want to make sure the council feels like they're still going to be involved in those major gifts, because it'll have to come through the council.
Well, maybe, would there be an opportunity for there to be a report, like an annual report?
Sure.
That could be filed, you know, with the council?
You bet.
I think it would be nice for us to know, you know, be hands-off, and yet, nice for us to know. And then even the additional public attention drawn to an annual report might be a good way, you know, to just, you know, free advertising, that it, reminding people that it exists and that it's out there, and what its successes are.
Yeah, and as Jennifer mentioned, me as part of the board, but just note that I'm an ex-official. I won't be fundraising, and so I'll be separated from that process, so.
Great, thanks.
Counselor Kylie.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate.
I do appreciate the effort, and because our Sioux Falls park system, our trail system, the river Greenway, it's really the crown jewel of the city of Sioux Falls, and it has something to offer to absolutely everybody in our community regardless of economic status. Everybody has the opportunity to participate in this great system. And as Jennifer had pointed out, it's benefited from our several public-private relationships that we've had in the past and that I hope will continue in the future, including the one that I started that I had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the skate park will greatly benefit from that type of public-private relationship. When we can put in a third of the money and somebody else comes up with an additional 1.35, wow, that's a win-win in this case for the youth of our community. So thank you very much for the efforts, everybody. It's greatly appreciated.
Counselor Erickson.
Yes, thank you. And this may be a little premature, but I know oftentimes when fundraising, it's helpful to, for example, I know the zoo used to, you could buy bricks and put your name on it and things like that. Will there be opportunities for that too, where maybe somebody's grandfather passed away and they loved going to such-and-such parks, so they want to sponsor the trees and have some sort of, I don't know if recognition is the right name or what, just a tiny little plaque that says "In honor of Joe Blow," and this is what it is? Are there opportunities like that, or is it just more along the lines of donating and, you know, where it goes? I just didn't know if there is a name recognition for that, for generations to know where to go or what to do or how that worked.
Yeah, I think currently we do that now. If somebody wants, for example, to donate a bench, for example, and they want to put their, in memory of somebody, we certainly do that. I think a lot of that stuff we can handle when they come to us, where we're not soliciting those gifts, and we work with them on a regular basis. A lot of the benches along the bike trail, for example, are often donated in memory of someone. And so I think that'll continue. I think Jennifer's and the foundation's role will really be about those bigger gifts and really seeking out those larger gifts to help advance projects for us. But that'll continue, and we'll have opportunities for people to do memorial benches and things like that.
Okay, thank you. And I, you know, I really am supportive of this. I think that it's a great opportunity for people to give back to areas that you enjoy and do. I mean, let's be honest, no one's going to donate to redo a street. They're just not going to do that. This is an opportunity to give to something that has a legacy and a lifelong that McKinnon Park's not going anywhere, you know, fill-in-the-blank, family park, whatever it is, and to be able to really move the needle one way or another, or a new park, whatever that might look like as well. And so I think it's a great opportunity for folks that want to leave legacy items to be able to give in a way that can really make a difference and have it be there for generations to come. And so I think it's great. We've got a lot of really generous people in this community, and why not give them an avenue to be able to leave those items? So thank you for your leadership in this, and I look forward to hearing more as it goes along.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Starr.
No, I just wanted to say, Director Kearney, congratulations on Sherman Park being named the USA Softball Complex of the Year. I've been to their national conventions. I know what an honor that is. It's not something that comes lightly, and we've had a great partnership with Sioux Falls People for Youth, and that group bringing national softball tournaments to town, and the city's made the investment to make it an incredible place to play softball, from kids as young as 10 and under to adults, whether it's fast pitch, slow pitch. It's really a feather in the hat for our city to, for that honor and for your department as well. So thank you for...
Thank you.
It fits in with what we're talking about today, because we've invested millions in that complex as well as our other ball fields and things. So it's really cool that this is, that honor was bestowed on the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Our team will appreciate it.
Great. Well, thank you for that. I appreciate the presentation. I think we're done with questions. Counselor Selberg.
We're done.
All right. Well, thank you for your presentation. Keep up the strong work. All right. Up next, we have public comment. If there's anyone here from the public that would like to comment on anything we discussed today, please come up to the podium. You're going to have five minutes. Thank you. Mr. Centella.
[laughter]
Again? All right, we're good. All right, so we are going to adjourn this meeting. Thanks.